All right, I'll call to order the June 24th, 2020 Springboro Board of Education meeting. Roll call.
Stukey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Bellage.
Here.
Goods.
Here.
Okay, item 1.1, please stand for the pledge. Tara is sharing a flag for us, all right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we now go to item 1.2, adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Lisa. Discussion or questions?
Hang on one second, I'm sorry, who moved, it was cutting out.
Dan.
Dan, and then the second did?
Lisa. Lisa did.
Right, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson? Bob?
Yes.
Okay, Bellage?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Okay. Item 1.3, approval of the June 6th, 2020 meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Is there a way we can approve all those at once? Or do we have to...
Yeah, we can go and do that, and I can just combine them when I do the minutes.
I just do that.
Okay.
Need to have a motion to approve items 1.3 through 1.7?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Goods, okay. And then, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bellage? Goods?
Yes.
Thank you very much, all right, we will move now to 2.1, the Springboro Education Association Report. Do we have anybody on from the FCA? Okay, item 2.2, the Springboro Classified Employees Association Report, is there anybody on from the FCA? Item 2.3 is pre-arranged public participation, I don't believe we had anybody that pre-arranged, so we can move to item 2.4. Is there any public participation on any of tonight's agenda?
This is the class here, I'm just a parent of my fourth grader, just here to listen.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, we can move then into the work session item, and I believe the first item. Go to 3.2, Ms. Hester and Ms. Cook to provide an update on the start of the school year. I know this is a topic that everybody is anxiously awaiting some definitive direction, as are we. And so, tonight, I think it would be important to share kind of where we're at in the process, and maybe also play out some of the timeline on some of the milestones that are coming up. Because I think over the next couple of weeks, we are hopefully, fingers crossed, going to be getting a little bit more direction from the state and county level, which should help as we finalize our plans for the fall. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hester and Ms. Cook.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, and this is going to be just a brief update, because like many districts throughout Ohio, we are still awaiting the official guidance from our Ohio Department of Education. But in the meantime, we continue to plan a framework for the restart of school in August, and hopefully, one of the first steps will be the approval of the amended calendar this evening. Our administrative team met on June the 9th, our full team, who spent a whole day wrapping our minds around what will school look like when we return? If it's a full face-to-face return, if it's a reduced capacity return, or if we have to go full remote again. So we have a framework in place, but like I said, we are anxiously awaiting ODE's reset restart guide, because that is our Department of Education, and follow any meetings that are given as a school district. There is a rumor that I heard today that the release will be in or on around Tuesday of next week, so hopefully, that's true. We want to ensure that our plan for Springboro aligns to the ODE framework, and also, most importantly, to the protocols for safety and health for our staff and students from the Warren County Health Department. They are a critical component of our plan. Moving forward, it is our hope, our true hope, that on July 8th, we will be able to present a draft plan for Springboro.
I'm listening to the school board meeting.
And with that draft plan, it's important to know that things can change, and in moments' notice, as we all know since last March. So it will be called a draft until we pretty much get ready to start school, and we are sure that the conditions are going to be as safe as possible for our staff and our students. So at the July 8th meeting, we will be bringing the board the Warren County Common Agreement that I think everybody has seen, that has been developed by the nine Warren County Superintendents alongside of the Warren County Health Department. So that's a critical piece that we would like to get the board's vote of approval for. Also, you'll see a remote learning plan, a declaration for the ODE that we must do as a school district, that's going to provide us flexibility in the event that conditions change for us rapidly, and we have to go back to full remote. And for the students and the families that determine coming back to school face-to-face would be too risky. So we are going to formulate a plan to submit to ODE, but it must be board through first. And then finally, our draft plan for reopening that would be specific to Springboro. And as we do all this, we are taking, like I said, we are working very closely every week with the Warren County Health Department. We're waiting anxiously for ODE, but then also, as we have done back in April, we've put the survey out to our stakeholders and got great data. And in a minute, Ms. Cook is going to summarize the data from the survey that just closed yesterday. And we take all of this into consideration as we develop the most safe and healthy plan for our staff and students. So Ms. Cook, if you would like to summarize the survey data for us.
Yes, Ms. Hester, I'd be happy to do that. Mr. President, members of the board, we did put out a four-question survey with regards to the start of school survey planning. We had an option A, if we offer school in person on five days a week on a full-day basis with a face covering for students, will you send your children to school? This would offer a typical start to the school with a face covering. We have 74% of our respondents, they said yes, they would send their kids, another 26% who said they would not. Option B was if the district runs a model with students in attendance on designated days, reducing the amount of students by 50%, with students spaced further apart in class, allowing more space for social distancing, thus less of a need for a face covering, would you send your children to school? 76% stated they would, 24% stated they would not. If the district goes with a limited model, such as that of option B, 50% of students in attendance at one time, parents were asked if they would rather have their student in school one week, online the next, or if they would rather have their children attend school on either a Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, with the days they're not in attendance being remote learning. Overwhelmingly, 67% prefer the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday option over the every-other-week option with 33% respondents choosing that item. And lastly, if you had to choose today between option A, which was all students in school every day, or option B with 50% of students in school, which do you prefer? This one was 63% were in favor of in-school every day with face coverings, whereas 37% preferred a rotating schedule with 50% of students. This survey encompassed information from 2,996 respondents, I did go through all of the open-ended questions. Would you like to include additional thoughts or information? And overwhelmingly, we had many responses with regards to face coverings. Some families felt as though nobody should have to wear a face covering, whereas other families had health concerns and thought everybody should have to wear a face covering. Many sick and compromised family members were mentioned, so they may have a healthy child coming to school, but they were concerned about the household. Another mention was that they wanted their children on the same schedule, so those were the themes with the open-ended question. I do have all objective data in charts available for you, and I will send that to Mr. President tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Hester, was there anything else that you wanted to add, or should we open it up for any questions?
That is really all that I have, because we really are just waiting for ODE to, we will get that and pour through it and make sure that what we are planning aligns with what our Department of Education is requiring us to do.
Can I ask a question on the survey? Is it possible to sort of refine the survey based on the grade level? Because the requirements for a kindergarten is substantially different than the requirements for a high schooler. And sort of see how do those kind of, like those parents feel about these issues? And also, the second question I had was, like, she mentioned, Andrew mentioned about 2,900 or 2,194, around that number, were people actually responded back? So just to get an idea of, like, how much is that in terms of percentage of number of Springboro school kids we have? Just to get an idea of, is it 20% and 30% parents who sort of responded? So just one suggestion and one question.
Thank you, sir, we did collect all grade levels, so when a parent responded, they gave the building that their children attended, or buildings, if that was applicable, as well as what grade levels they were in. So we are able to disaggregate that data to find out what percentage of elementary parent respondents chose a certain direction, as opposed to secondary, we can do that. As far as how many, we had just under 3,000, with 2,996, we have 6,200 roughly, about 6,200 children within the district. We asked that only one parent would answer the survey, so we feel like we have a good sampling from all grade levels, based on the information we got from the parents. And with 6,200 children in the district, with families ranging anywhere from one to five and six children within a household, we feel as though we have an excellent sample of our parents.
Thank you, I think it is a good number, based on what you just said.
Thank you, sir.
I think there's some confusion with the option A with what is meant with masks. Can there be some clarification? And I know we're still waiting to get further direction with what the governor is going to require, but if the governor gives to the local school board as to what direction there will be there. I know the communication, Mr. Marshall had responded to some questions from parents on Facebook. Can you give further explanation around that of what the district is thinking with masks? If we do go back to, if we take the option of going back to school full-day with masks, masks 100% of the time, or is it when we're not able to socially distance?
It is when we are not able to socially distance, so if we have 30 children in a room, and we're unable to have this foot around them, that would require masks.
So I think that there was some frustration from the community, because there was confusion as to whether it meant 100% of the time that there would be masks, or is it that if they're sitting at a desk by themselves, not in a group of other students, whether they would be able to take the masks down? For the district, you know, for us to acknowledge that right now, the direction, if we're given the option to have them not require masks, and a student and a family wants their child not to have a mask if they're by themselves, that that's the direction we're looking at right now. Because I think there were some people that were hesitant to hand, to fill out the survey completely, because they felt option A was only if you 100, if you agreed to wear the mask 100% of the time. So I just wanted to make sure we had clarity around that, that that's not what we were looking at for option A. Am I correct, I'm correct in saying that, right?
I don't know that there would be a point in the day whereby a mask would not be required if we're looking at a six-foot distance. I can't imagine in any of our buildings, our buildings are so tight right now, you know, I think about Five Points, I think about the high school. When we do movement through the halls, when we have 30 students within a classroom from a square footage standpoint, I can't imagine any youngster being able to come to school and not have a mask on all day from the time they leave their home to the time they arrive back.
So even sitting by themselves in a desk, if it's an individual desk?
Yeah, I think once we're inside the classrooms, and we've cleared them, and we're as distant as possible, everybody's facing the same way, that's a cohort in that room, masks are going to be, it'll be a little bit more relaxed there. When we're in situations of mass movement, we've got a mask. More than likely, the bus will require a face, I don't mean to say mask, a face covering of some sort, because there's, it's almost impossible to distance appropriately on a school bus. And again, the, this is all in conjunction with the Warren County Health Department, and we have to follow their strong urgings and recommendations so that everybody is safe.
And then we would have an option for families that did not, were not comfortable of being in a school setting, if they were in a desk by themselves with a face covering on, if they weren't covered, comfortable being with other students, then we would have an online option available for those students, correct?
That is our intent, we have, as of this week, we're working with SWOCA to double our bandwidth to accommodate that, as well as our tech engineer is working as far as hardware goes. And I was going to bring some of this up when we talk a little bit about our technology service contract, but yes, we're working toward that.
So can I ask one more question, this is the class here again. So as we know that Governor Dwyane has sort of given this, sort of, you know, he has said that counties can decide, or in terms of how their school is going to look like in fall. So are we to avoid by Warren County rules completely, or is it something that we can do at township level to sort of make our plans more township-focused in some way? Because let's say, we do not have any COVID patients, or any COVID cases in July or let's say August, and we are like clean, but Warren County as a whole is not clean. Do we have any sort of flexibility in modifying some of the guidelines there?
We are a public institution that can be shut down by the Warren County Health Department, so just like when we have whooping cough, and they monitor those numbers really, really closely, we have got, we can't turn our head to what the health professionals of our health department are telling us, keep everybody safe. When we're in that, when we have that many people coming together to be educated. So we have to really be mindful of what they are strongly urging and recommending for us to do.
Okay, no, so I agree that, I think safety is the most utmost concern, but what I was trying to say is that, let's say, if the hotspot is the southmost point of Warren County, and we are in the northmost point of Warren County, is the rule same for everyone, or is it something that we can modify some of the guidelines, because things are too far away from us?
Doctor, the health department.
Yeah, I'm, they're looking at us as a county, as nine schools.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
And the district is ready with different phases, based off of if our area were to get hit, and we started seeing more students impacted, then we might have to look at school differently in August than we're looking at it in October, correct? So we have different plans that we're ready to implement, based off of what we're seeing in Springboro, just like, to your point, sir, that different areas are getting hit. It sounds like we have different plans in place that we have to be ready to address when, unfortunately, it very well could hit Springboro. So we have to be very flexible, which is why they're doing what they're doing with the plans, it's tough, but...
I definitely, I get it. And then, I know this is too far down the line, but is it, have you guys sort of started thinking about when to switch from Plan A to Plan B? When, let's say, cases start appearing in kids, like God forbid that happens, but let's say if a kid from Five Points Elementary gets, comes positive, is it like, okay, all online in school from next day, or we need to have, you know, X amount of kids? So I'm just talking, think at a threshold in some sense. So have you guys started to think about that, or is it something that maybe come down the line?
We will, just like, we kind of had a dry run with the whooping cough epidemic in our, this past year.
Yeah.
We were in constant, every day, our district nurse was in constant contact with her nurse at the Warren County Health Department, monitoring and doing actual content, contact tracing of individuals with the whooping cough. And we looked at that along with our attendance, attendance of staff, because we have to have people to keep the children safe. We can't open up school if we don't have enough staff, so staff and student attendance is constantly monitored.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Michelle Carter, I'm a junior high parent. You talk a lot about, you know, the county having some discretion over this, and I did see yesterday that Levin and City Schools released their reopening plans. Is there any collaboration that's happening with the other surrounding schools?
Absolutely, every Wednesday, all nine Warren County Superintendents are on a call with the Warren County Health Department.
And are we going to see similar things with the other neighboring districts with just small tweaks based off of what fits those districts then?
It's fair to say that when we all sat with the Warren County Health Department and made that common agreement, that's what they were comfortable putting their seal of approval on as a health department. And we all said that we would work as closely as we can to that guideline. There could be a tweak, like for Springboro, maybe we want to look at, instead of opting into remote learning for a semester, maybe for our population, a quarter would be better. But truly, the health precautions, those are from the medical experts, and so we have to listen to those and look at those. But there are, there is ability for us to be flexible with some things.
With the remote, would there be teachers teaching the remote, or would there be Skype of the classrooms that are being taught at the schools?
We plan to utilize Google Meet, so our students have a seamless return back to school. So they will be working with their teacher during the timeframe in which the teacher is teaching via live stream.
So how will the privacy of the other students be addressed, the students in the classroom?
We've talked to legal on that, and we will be setting our cameras such that it will be on the teacher. If the student is accessing, they're accessing from their springboro.org account, so it will not be an open feed, and it will only be children who are opting to go by the nine weeks of at-home learning. So from a legal standpoint, those children have access to the other children within their classrooms, they will be the only ones who will be allowed on that live stream. So it's similar access as if they were in the classroom, according to our council.
Okay, that makes sense. Nine of them might be remote, and they won't have another 25 children, the nine at home will be part of their 25.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And part of why that will work is because, again, to try to get as much physical distance between desks as possible. We are stripping rooms of everything that is not essential for education, so A, that we can keep them as clean as possible and as sterile as possible. And it will require us to put all desks in the same, you know, forward pattern, so that the teacher truly is just up in front, and that's what the camera is capturing.
That makes sense.
And it is not recorded, I said camera, but it's not, it's a live, and once it's done, it's done.
Other questions or discussion?
Hi, my name's Heather, my son's supposed to go to Five Points next year. I have a, I guess it's more of a comment, I read the superintendent agreement, and then I was a little surprised when the survey came out a couple of days later, because what the agreement, as I read it, said that facial coverings were going to be recommended but not required, and whoever was uncomfortable with that could do at-home learning. Now, you know, the survey, and I was one of the people that, I guess, felt like I couldn't really answer it because of the facial covering five days a week. But it sounds to me, just from hearing you guys, that you guys don't see any way that they're not going to come to school with masks on at some point throughout the day?
I don't see that with a 100% allowable attendance. If we went with option B with 50% of students in attendance at one time, that would be possible.
Okay, so if the, I guess if the Warren County Health Department is recommending that children go with facial coverings, and that's what you guys are going to do? Whether they say it's mandatory or recommended, if they say it's recommended, you guys are going to follow that?
I guess what wasn't stated in here now that I'm reading it is recommended if the proper social distance could not be adhered to.
And I mean, the kids' desks, everybody's desk isn't six feet apart, right?
Right.
Right.
Does that change to where you could have desks three feet apart, or is that also six feet apart still?
That is up, and I mean, like Levin and I believe is going to try to get four to five feet apart. So it's just maximum, maximum space. And I do believe Warren County Health Department's going to come out with an explanation for all school districts on what is exposure, what does it mean, how does, you know, true exposure happen, so that we can understand when a mask is truly necessary to maintain safety.
Some of the classes are definitely going to have 30 kids, correct?
We do have class lists, not a lot, but we do have some class lists with 30 children in the room, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I had it, and there's no way you can put them six foot apart in the classrooms that we have at the high school, you know that, I mean, it's...
And we are trying to really go in to take everything out. And, and we are trying to really go in to take everything out, Mr. Stuckey. As Carrie alluded to, we're going to get as much occupancy as we possibly can there with as much distancing as possible. So we're room to room to just try to, to get everything out and get them spaced as much as we can. But we're going to do it to each individual room.
So any, you guys have discussed what are the guidelines during the recess for the kids? Because there's the, there's the time where they probably forget about social distancing, for sure. At least the younger ones.
The elementary principals will be looking at creative options for recess. And then reducing capacity in the lunchroom. So, so tweaking schedules so that we can have less kiddos in the lunchroom. And then that would ultimately flow right out into the recess.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adriana Gory, and I was wondering, when you were talking about having the possibility of streaming classes to those kids quarter or semester, if that's an option. Would this also be available to the kids who may have to, I don't know, stay home because they had a temperature? Or like just a regular illness kind of about? Or is it only for those who will be home for the whole quarter?
At this point, we're looking at a nine-week commitment so that we can take our, our technology and make sure that we don't have people coming into the room that should not be in the room. So right now, we are looking at a nine-week commitment on that.
Okay, thank you.
But it's, it's probably fair to say if a student has been exposed and has to do the quarantine, that they can then utilize the, the live stream.
Well, that's what I was wondering, so they don't fall behind. Let's say if they miss a week, two weeks of school, whatever amount of time. Thank you.
Quarantine, we'll be able to add them to that open list to be able to get into the classroom. That would be roughly a 14-day. But if we have illnesses that are lasting 24, 48 hours, we're not able to manage that from a tech standpoint. And still be able to keep the room closed.
Thank you.
I have one more question. What is the end? I mean, when does this end, I guess, is my question? When Department of Health says it ends? Or, I mean, I just don't see an end in sight for these requirements.
It's the million-dollar question.
So I, yeah, okay.
Is it the Health Department, though, that makes that, that gives us that guidance? Is it the governor?
I would say ODE, the governor and the Health Department, and the state Health Department. Those are the key players guiding us.
As a board member, I don't feel comfortable going against the Health Department. So if, if that's the recommendation, then I'm opposed to that.
So and there's no consideration taken? One, that wearing masks are a huge communication barrier. Two, you're putting six, five, six, seven, eight-year-olds in masks all day? They're not going to leave them on. And three, that there's no science out there that says a 100% cotton face mask is stopping the transmission of COVID. You know, the only thing that stops it isn't a 95 and a face shield. If we want to, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me. I'm sorry, I'm frustrated. But.
I appreciate your frustration, but again, I, I, I don't see a scenario where we as a board go against what the Warren County Health Department is instructing or recommending that we do. I just, I don't.
I mean, I guess I can see for a liability standpoint for you guys, but it's just really not conducive to learning. I don't, and I appreciate the home streaming and all of that. But at that point, I may as well just homeschool myself. And, you know, I, I don't know, it's, it's just frustrating.
Well, there's no doubt, it's going to be some difficult decisions, not only by us, but parents too. I mean, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, I mean, it is, I think you are not the only one. There are probably half of the parents who are in the same board right now. The one thing I want to ask, since we are sort of talking about the same things, for kids who want to commit to nine-week home learning, I wanted to get, get a feel of, you know, student-teacher interaction, personal interaction is, is key, you know, to the overall growth of the student as well, this online learning, which doesn't provide that. So is there a way to have the kids interact with the teachers on some days in some form? So that they can continue their online learning at home for nine weeks, but still be in touch with the teachers? So that, you know, they feel a connection with the teacher and not just like a YouTuber who is teaching you something for, you know, nine weeks and you never get to see them. So just like your, you guys thought on that?
The format would be similar to how we are right now, so there can be some interaction. Of course, it is not in person, but rather from a screen. We utilize Google products within the district, so it would be via Google Meet. Google Meet has a release whereby they have a lot more features similar to Zoom for teachers to be able to work with students in small groups online in the future. So that should be coming out. It may be out now. So it was supposed to have come out now. I'm not sure if they've released that. Just by the time school is back.
If we were to, when we, when people choose the options for their students, if the district were to see that their like full class makeup of first grade, might there be an option of having a full remote class taught by a teacher that is teaching from home? So all their learning is happening online?
Something that Mrs. Quarter and I have talked about with regards to that, that particular building only. If a teacher is, is teaching from home, a lot of our parent surveys from May said that, that parents would like to see a teacher in a, in a classroom type of a setup as opposed to from their home, for whatever reason. We would likely have a teacher utilizing space within the district to be able to do that. It will depend on the amount of students. That building is a little bit more readily accessible as far as scheduling than perhaps a high school class where we would have to redo 160 schedules to make that happen. But with regards to first grade, we do have a situation that we've talked about as that with the possibility.
I guess I wasn't even just thinking first grade. I was thinking like, let's say, fourth grade for, for students that if, if you're live streaming only seeing the teacher during that time, but then once that teacher's done teaching, you know, the teacher is going to be walking throughout the classroom and the student at home isn't going to be getting any of that interaction. And I'm just curious, have we considered if there's full classes that we could make up with a teacher that just teaching remote? If they could have a different experience for those students that need to be taught at home? Would that, I mean, I, I agree that what, with the spring, they had to turn on a dime so quickly. But with given more time, could it be more of a true online learning experience for those that need to be taught at home for, whether it's for them, for a family situation, or whatever?
We, we need more data on that as far as what children are going to come, which aren't. I know that many districts are sending out a commitment survey. Once plans are laid and families have an opportunity to discuss within their own plan, what they plan to do with their children. Right now, we don't have enough information out to families for them to make that type of commitment. But that would be something that we would, we would be able to consider once we have a commitment from families and know how many children per grade level and the availability of somebody who would like to do that. And what we've found is our teachers really miss the, the day-to-day interaction with their children in the classroom.
I have a question, if that's okay to hop in. I did, I wasn't able to hop in until like about 6:30. But I did ask a friend who's on there that you guys have not addressed anything with the IEP kids yet? Is that correct?
We always have our students on IEPs in mind, and we do consider them. All families participated in the survey, and many families did in the open-ended question, express concerns for children who are on IEPs.
So I guess my question is, are you guys have been discussing what to do as far as, you know, your IEP kids who are not compliant or able to wear masks? The IEP kids who, I know for my son personally, does not understand personal bubble or staying the six feet apart? You know, this entire quarantine where we've been home? I mean, his services as far as speech therapy, OT intervention specialists, all of that kind of really just went out the window. I mean, I know they did the best they could, and that, I know that's no fault to them. But, you know, doing it for a couple of months is no big deal. But you're asking us to do it for an entire school year where our children are not getting the services they're required to per the state? I mean, has there been any discussion on how you guys plan on getting them their services? And what happens when the children are not compliant with the masks?
Yes, we work as a team with our special education administrative team. So there has been discussions. We're in the loop with them every week. I do meet with our special ed director, both coordinators on a weekly basis. So these are, these are concerns that we are talking about.
So do you have any idea like when they would let us know? I mean, I just know for me, last minute. I don't, I don't want to wait last minute to know, am I enrolling my kid in Springboro? Or am I homeschooling them? Because if I'm homeschooling them, that's going to take me a lot of preparation to homeschool a special needs child.
We had talked prior to your entry into the room that we should have some decisions by July 8th during that board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And is it something that we could consider if we went to the, I'm glad that you brought that up. That was a question in my head too, for two things. One is if we went to the, the option B, where they were going either two days a week or a week at a time, is it an option that we could have enough space available for the special needs students to be there on a more consistent basis so that there is, and still have the social distancing?
I mean, I feel like you guys are really discussing the 50/50 option, which would probably make it easier for the special needs kids. But I feel like, just from what I've seen and talking to friends who are on here now through text, it's just that I feel like there's really been no discussion, is that an option, the 50/50? Is that completely off the table? There's just not been a lot of talk about that.
We went over all of the survey results, and 50/50 option was discussed at that time. And we're just answering any questions that, that our parents have at this point. So any questions that anybody has, if it relates to the 50/50, we're happy to discuss that.
Clarify that, it's important that, that I don't think anything is sort of ruled out or off the table yet. Because as we said at the very beginning, we still are awaiting guidance. And so again, we're still very much in sort of a discussion phase. So I don't think anything should be positioned as definitive because we're not at that point yet. So, and I know, I know everybody wants answers yesterday, as do we. But again, you know, we're, we're still working through it, the very fluid situation, and are still gathering more information by the day.
And to your point, I think there's other things to consider too with your special needs children. If we're, if they're in situations where they need masks, there's masks available that are see-through so they can see the teacher's mouths. And there's going to be some things that, accommodations that will need to be made that, you know, depending on whatever decisions are made. So, you know, it's just, we're not quite to that point of, of working through the love, that level. But I think that we'd be very open to feedback because you know your children the best.
This is because here again, let me clarify something. So let's say, let's say there are 100 kids. I'm just giving example here to specify this. Let's say there are 100 kids out of that 20, 20 say that they are going to be committing to online, online learning for nine weeks. So that, that means 80% of the students who want to come to school. In that case, after all said and, or everything is said and done, is it going to be like, it is going to be either option A or option B? Not the combination of the two? Because if it's the combination of the two, it doesn't make sense in that case. So. Is it clear what I'm trying to say?
I, I don't think, I mean, I mean, just, I don't think we'd be able to sort of, it would have to be sort of one or the other. I mean, just purely from like a transportation perspective.
Yes.
You know, we, we can't be sort of, you know, it would have to be sort of one or the other. I mean, just, you know, there'd be other barriers as well, but that's sort of the biggest one that comes to mind.
Okay, and then one thing sort of which popped up in my mind right, right away, at least in the last five minutes was, so in, back in April, what we started seeing is that the, the educator, online learning was five days a week, essentially, you know, the kids got to do math and science all for all five days. And then it was switched to two days a week. Two days math, science, and two days English and social studies. I'm talking about like a fourth grade. And after a couple of weeks, it was switched to one day, one day mandatory and one day optional. So I kind of didn't like it personally because, you know, it is first of all hard to get them to do anything at home. And then if you make them optional, you know, it is, it did not help them to, you know, retain what they were learning and probably. So for, for kids who are going to be learning all like from home for nine weeks, I'm assuming that it's going to be not like the diluted version of the education, but the entire five-day learning.
I assure you, it will not look like quarter four again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or discussion?
Actually, yes, this is Wendy Parks. I have a student. Are any accommodations being made for interactive lessons such as science? In case we go on into online learning only?
We're looking for interactive lessons in all areas.
Hi, this is Karen Lampy, and I'm an incoming freshman this year. And I'm just, I would like to know if the Health Department has given you any indication on when, who they will require to quarantine if there is a positive COVID case within the district?
So our district nurse is working with the Warren County Health Department to make sure that we have those protocols in place, and we would immediately follow them. And then the common agreement with the Warren County Supers has that framework in it. There was some tweaking being done by the Warren County Health Department so that we are truly following the best medical practice.
So do you know if, if that would include, for example, if there was a teacher or a child that tested positive that was in a classroom? I wouldn't assume that that entire classroom would need to quarantine for 14 days. Anybody that the student was on the school bus with would need to quarantine for 14 days. Anybody that they were in contact with for an extended period of time would need to quarantine for 14 days. Is that correct?
I don't know if the whole group would. That would be up to the Health Department when they do the contact tracing and they determine the level of exposure.
Yeah, and I think it's for, they have to be around the vicinity, six foot with, for a 10-minute period. I think that is, but.
With no mask, they would do all these questions, yeah. And we were told by the Health Department that they would take that process over. We would immediately notify them of a positive case once we know. And then the Health Department moves in and they do their procedures and their protocol.
Other questions or discussion?
I actually have a question about the preschool. I noticed on your last parent's survey, I had a little snippet basically where they fall under jobs and family services. So do you know where parents can go to to look to see what to expect for the preschoolers before we pay for the registration and all that?
At this point, preschool is capped at nine youngsters per job and family services. Currently have eight children in a room who are considered typical, and eight children in a room who are IEP children. We will be servicing all of our IEP children with a max of eight within the classroom of children on IEPs. At this time, our. At this time, our plan, unless changes occur with that division, is to service solely children on IEPs.
Other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody for the input. As we discussed at the beginning, for anybody that sort of joined late. And obviously, there's still a lot of moving pieces and we appreciate the input and the feedback that's been provided, you know, in this discussion as well as through the surveys. And our administrative team continues to work with guidance from the state and the health department as we finalize these plans. And obviously, we'll be back in touch as those start to materialize. But do want to thank everybody for the, for the participation this evening. I think we can move now to item 3.3, Ms. Cook, on software subscriptions.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I do have three software subscriptions to bring forward that are in excess of the max allowable by board policy without approval. Those programs are Mind Play, Renaissance, which is star math and freckle, and Discovery, which covers science and health. All three of these programs are primarily utilized within the elementary grade levels, with the exception of portions of Mind Play being used through the high school for students on IEPs who require reading intervention.
Questions? Go ahead.
The Renaissance and Discovery are three-year agreements. The Mind Play is a one-year agreement.
So are we allowed, how do we access, I'm sorry, let me finish it right. When our kids get the access to these software licenses right away or just at the beginning of the school year?
It depends on the grade level of your child. If your child was in second or third grade this year, you would still have access to Mind Play. If your child was in first through fifth, you would still have access to Freckle Math through the end of July. Discovery is, is not accessible at this point until the beginning of the school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Clear questions or discussion?
Can you help us? I've heard a lot of conversation around Mind Play. Can you help me understand? I know you've got some data around that and how that was selected, why it was selected? Yeah.
Mind Play is utilized in grades two and three with all typical children and most children on IEPs in grades two and three. That is an artificial intelligence program that is adaptive to the student's reading level. I don't know how in-depth you would like me to get on the data, so I'll just start and you can stop me when you see fit. This year, we had against all students in grades two, three and students through high school with special needs. This particular subscription is 29% of it is going from a financial standpoint to special needs students and 71% to gen ed in grades two and three. Our students at Dennis Elementary gained 1.72 grade levels of growth with an average of 33 hours in use on the program. Students at Five Points gained 2.02 grade levels of growth with 32 hours on the program. Our high school students, which are special needs students, gained 1.17 years growth on the program with 21 hours. At the junior high, we had 1.32 growth in 20 hours. When I brought this to you last year, I explained to you that the data that we get from the program would be compared with our state testing data, which we did do in the fall with our third graders. They had been on the program for a full year in second and a portion of the year in third when they took their fall third grade reading assessment. We did have the highest passage rate on that assessment. The program itself has a 98% accuracy for predicting state test results in Ohio. We do have teachers who obviously have, have made more growth than other teachers. For instance, Mrs. Tiffany Page up at Five Points had 3.28 years growth average among her classroom in second grade. The Mind Play Virtual Reading Coach meets the child through an assessment where they are and takes them as far out as they need to go. So if we're seeing students who are making too much growth, if there is such a thing, we pull them off and put them in reading circles so that they can work from a standpoint outside of the program to hone their skills within a reading circle. Would you like me to keep going or is that enough data for you?
Well, that's hopeful. I'm just curious why, I mean, I've, what, what component of it, because I've heard frustration, I've seen on Facebook frustration from parent side and then I've heard chatter that there's some teachers that have some frustration, but those are really good results. So I'm just curious with the way that the program's set up, and I think it's good that this is an online thing, right?
It is online and our, our youngsters during March, April and the portion of May that we were in school, including our special needs students and our typical students made a 0.17 years growth. And you figure that, that's growth without a teacher in front of them. So we worry, utilize this program during our COVID shutdown. So that's another important piece along with also Renaissance, Star Math and Freckle and Discovery and Science. So those are all programs that we can utilize with children if we do end up in a situation of at-home learning. Parents often ask what they can do to assist their child at home. These are all programs in the elementary level that can assist children at home as well as at school. They work great in centers when teachers are using center rotations to be able to work with small groups of children on their reading skills or on their mathematics skills. Other children can be working on Mind Play or on math through Freckle. So they work great for stations. We do ask the teachers to attempt 20 minutes per day, whether that's at home or in-house in the school. We, we averaged this year roughly an hour a week, so 20 minutes, three times per week.
So is that maybe where the frustration is, is trying to get that time in?
I think in some cases, the frustration is trying to get the time because.
Is the housekeeping item, could people that aren't speaking?
Just gonna ask the same thing. If you're not talking, if you could mute, that'd be helpful.
That would be great. Thank you.
I think the host can mute the particular microphone.
I, I am, people keep jumping on and jumping off, so it's hard to keep up with everybody. So I'm trying.
I think it's coming from Rhonda's iPhone, if I'm looking at my screen correctly.
All right. Thank you very much. As I said, I, I do send out emails. Mr. Wiggins sends out emails. We're constantly watching the data. Those early literacy skills are hard to capture after fourth grade. So that's why we're utilizing the program with all second and third graders to attempt to have a plan whereby students have an adaptive program that meets them where they are and we can work with them on an online program, whether that's at home or whether that is in school. So if we look at individual children, there's quite a discrepancy when a child is utilizing the program at home to those who are only using the program in class. Our largest growth is coming from higher usage and hours within the program.
Okay. I'm, I think it's, I think it's good that we're in thinking ahead, especially of next year with COVID-19 and knowing that we might need to flip on a dime, that we've got these remote options. I like that. I think that that's going to be a critical piece to make sure that we're moving kids ahead and this is at their level. I'm just, I think it's, it's important to, to, to continue to monitor if there are ways that we could be figuring out different ways to do it, if there's ways to use it that, that fit better with or differently so that they're, you know, hearing the concerns of whatever families are using it. I don't, I don't have children that age, so I don't know what it is. I just have heard that come up. So when it came up in the agenda, I just wanted to ask, but I mean, the data to your, you know, I appreciate you bringing the data. The data is really, is really strong. So not against, you know, voting for it. I just am a little bit concerned that there is this much people that have frustration around it.
There are a lot of reports that parents can access or can ask the teacher to access for them. Occasionally, I do get a phone call from parents in elementary asking for assistance in going through the report and what it means. So it is, it is very data-driven. And I know that that does frustrate a lot of people when they're looking at the reports and maybe don't quite understand what the report means. So I don't ever have a problem walking folks through those steps, bringing a report up with them on screen, looking at it, explaining how to read it, where their child has deficits, where their child is doing very well within the reading program. So I do that periodically, but if you ever have anybody that has questions, please send them my way and I'm happy to go over their individual child's report with them.
So Andrea, is there a a way to have fourth and fifth graders adopt this program as well? If, if, if not in class, but at home? So that, you know, they just keep improving on their, you know, reading and comprehension skills?
There, there is a parent access to the program. The program comes with a rather expensive cost. So we have to utilize our budget funds where we see the, the need most. If you are interested in utilizing the program, it is www.mindplay.com. And if a parent is able to access that, but there is a fee that comes with access.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on item 3.3? Okay. I think we can move to item 3.4, Ms. Robinson. I believe this one's yours.
Yes. Hi, Mr. Board President, board members and everybody else online. I want to talk a little bit about a settlement proposal from our, our fire suppression company that we utilize called A1 Sprinkler System. In March of 19, or March of 19, there was a quote from them to replace the high school fire panel. This was before my time. It was done by the interim Jim Ruffin, who was here at the time. He got a quote for replacement of the fire panel. If you remember, and I don't know if you recall, the sprinkler system was going off a lot last year. They had to evacuate the school numerous times. So we needed to get that replaced. The quote was for $44,587. They began work on this system the end of June, finished up around August the 17th of 2000. The fire panel was more complex than was quoted. And there was additional work that they had to get done. This was verbally approved by my predecessors. So all told, they came back in December and had a meeting with me and proposed this additional monies to be paid of $15,952 for additional equipment that was installed and $58,255 for additional labor, a total of $74,207. Yeah, I said no. And I said that we would consider doing something about the equipment due to the fact that it was on our property. But we would have to definitely look at the labor. Tara and I talked numerous times about this and kept on pushing back to them. They kept on talking with us. We got our legal counsel involved. They sent a letter and then they legaled up as well. After going back and forth multiple times, they did agree to a settlement of $40,000. So that's $34,000 off of what they indicated that they put into the additional system. So all told, you're looking at $84,000, $85,000 for a, a fire panel, which it's very high, to be honest with you. Not something that I want to spend money on. I don't think we as a district want to spend money on it. But it's either going forward with, you know, litigation or settling. So, any questions?
I appreciate you pushing back like you did, but yeah, very impressive of a, of a relationship to have that happen. So thank you for pushing back like you did and getting it down to this point.
Yeah. And, and yeah, from a relationship perspective, Ms. Bab, this, this definitely isn't a good, good thing for us.
And so with that said, do we, do we have alternatives in the future for different companies that can kind of step in here and?
Absolutely. Already been looking at different options.
Okay, great. Thank you for seeing that through.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rob. Appreciate your work on that. Ms. Cook, I think it's back to you, item 3.5 for the Forward Edge contract.
All right. Forward Edge is our contract company that we work with, with technology. We've been with them for a number of years. Our contract with them is ending, so this is a renewal contract. We have online tech support through them with a tech coordinator and tech engineers. This is a two-year contract. You will note that year one has a different cost basis than year two. The reason for that was I asked for a reduction this year in, in cost in order to assist us with regards to increasing our bandwidth as well as the purchase of microphones for online learning. So we did have some hardware that we had to put some money forth on as well as increasing our bandwidth from one gig to two gigs, which is in process right now. Mrs. Bab, you had brought up earlier on some questions with regards to online accessibility for families if they choose the nine-week options. Our increased bandwidth should be able to handle this with no problem. We have doubled our bandwidth. This was a project that we needed to do regardless of online learning. We were hitting our cap several times after Christmas last year. We should be able to handle three devices per student. When you take a student's Chromebook plus their phone plus an Apple Watch, our students are coming in with more and more technology. And when we saw this cap out, it was right after Christmas. So we believe that students received some gifts over Christmas time that, that had accessibility that, that exceeded that of three per child. So that is why you see a reduction in the first year and the second year back up. This is a two-year agreement. We will be able to negotiate if that first, that first year, if, if, if things aren't going as well as we hope, we're able to do some negotiating to get some extra help within the buildings if need be. Oftentimes, we ask for extra help during testing. At this time, we don't even know if testing is going to occur. So we're a little bit in the air, but we are working with a company that, that is very flexible with us and does have the staffing to be able to work with us should we need more staffing on site. So that is a two-year agreement.
Are we able to pull back on their help if we have to close down school completely and just do remote? Like if we don't, like, do we need more people during that time or are we able to pull back on people? Like, what does that look like if we had to go full remote again?
It's worked out, it worked out well during quarter four, having that staffing available. They were, they were having to work remotely also due to the shutdown, but we had them working on some projects that kept them rather busy. So some of the projects that we're seeing right now, for instance, is they're, they're readying all staff laptops that you approved back. I think it was in April, the readying Chromebooks for Dennis Elementary, working on the active directory with Google. So they have plenty of work. We are scaling back to that, that percentage there. So that is a loss of hours already. So I can't think that we would need to scale back any further. If anything, we'll need to bring some more back in. We're running, you know, a district with 6,200 students and roughly 500 staff online with, with three men. So they are very efficient. They get the job done. We're very pleased with the work that they are doing with our hardware and our software and networking.
Ms. Cook, are there any other questions around this, item 3.5? Okay, I think we can move to. Okay, I think we can move to item 3.6. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Don't have any.
Okay, and we can move to 3.7. Is there any other business for work session?
Uh, this is a Zoom board meeting.
Okay, Ms. Floyd, I think we can move into, again, if you could go on mute, if you're not speaking, thank you. We can move now into, I guess, your section, Ms. Floyd, and I think 4.1 we're voting on separately, it looks like, right?
We were going to, but Dave had to leave at seven, so I'll go ahead, go through them together and I'll just make the change on the minutes.
Okay.
Item four, one is the approval of a donation of fifteen dollars from Ronald and Sherry Malone for the student meal balance account, which at the end of the year now, it is up to one thousand and five dollars in donations for the year. And then item 4.2 is the approval of the fiscal twenty final amended appropriations, as well as the temporary appropriations to get us started for fiscal twenty-one. Those are due auditor by June thirtieth. So that's for those two items. And then the last item I have is approval of the payment of invoices, transfers, investment of funds, and appropriation adjustments for fiscal twenty-one. It's a compliance that we do each year before we start the next, next fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve items 4.1 through 4.3?
移到
Any discussion or questions on any of these?
Anderson? Anderson?
Do we lose Charles?
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Bab?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now turn it back over to Ms. Hester. I think we're doing items 5.1. Well, are we going to do the same thing? Can we do all of them together?
Sure.
She's not here. Okay. Ms. Hester, do we lose Carrie?
I was just moving right along and on mute. Five point one is the approval of the calendar that we discussed at the last board meeting to amend the start date for students from August nineteenth through to August twenty-sixth. Item 5.2 is our personnel report for June. We did have another bus driver retire, so that is not a good thing, but we are actively posting for that position and hope to get some qualified people. And then 5.4 is the athletic report for June.
Their motion to approve 5.1, 5.2, and 5.4?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I, I have one thing to add to that. I agree that with the calendar that we do need to, we can definitely benefit from moving it back a week and having some additional professional development. But I would love to see opportunities presented just for anybody that would, that, that would like some additional support around remote learning. I think that looking at what is happening when groups of students are getting together, like in the childcare environment, we're seeing it happen quickly. And I'm concerned that it might get to the point that we have to turn on a dime like we did in March. And I don't know exactly what the needs are, but I think if we could have a district reach out and say, though, you and I get it that right now they're not on their contracted days, but to just offer it up as an opportunity like some other neighboring districts have, that if you'd like to take advantage of some training around remote learning, I just, you know, I don't, I want to make sure that we are doing our job and our due diligence as a district so that we're setting them up for success, because I know as a parent, the frustration I had, and we had amazing teachers for our kids, but they are not trained to teach remotely. And I just want to make sure, even with the week before school starts, there's a lot of things that are going to be happening during that week. And a lot of teachers are planners and their heads are spinning around, what might this look like? So I would just love to see, like, I know Lakota right now is offering Thursday mornings and you can jump on and there's a recording if not, but it's ways to, if we have to go remote, this is what, you know, these are things that you can do to help you be successful. So, so I completely support kicking the calendar back a year, but also digging into it with our teachers just to see if that need is out there and what, what it is that we can do to further support them. So I'm glad that we're doing this, but I think it's an and, and without a requirement, but just what can we do to help provide that opportunity?
So Lisa, this is because here again, so when you say training, is it to the teachers?
To the teachers, yeah, because they're not trained to teach online.
Would it, would it, would it make sense to have volunteer students as well in the first week for the school to give their feedback on what is working and what is not? So I'm talking about week of August nineteen. So whoever, you know, kids at, are at home and who would like to sort of try it out with the teachers? So it's sort of learning for both of them, but they can provide their feedback. Hey, this, this thing is working, this is not. So, so that may expedite the process of like teachers' understanding of, you know, what is, what we can refine in our learning methodology so that we can be more effective in the week that the school is supposed to start.
I, I can't count on that. I'm just a board member.
No, but again, so I, but this is something that maybe opened up to, to the parents that hey, if, if you are thinking of, you know, having your kids for nine weeks at home, maybe this is something that you want to try it out and see if this is going to work and will provide your feedback to the teachers so that we can get more prepared.
Ms. Cook or Ms. Hester, I don't know if you want to chime in. I know we've already done some surveying of our teachers to solicit feedback, you know, regarding sort of the experience that we went through in the spring related to this. I mean, I guess, you know, again, I'm a board member as well, but it seems like from a plan perspective, that that may be challenging to sort of wait that long to have people making decisions about sort of what they're, they're going to be doing. But anyway, I just, I didn't know if you had any, any thoughts or wanted to chime in.
I do, I do. We did survey our teachers at the end of May, prior to their year ending, prior to their contracts ending. We asked them a lot of open-ended questions. They told us what worked for them, what didn't work for them. They gave us areas where they felt they were in need of professional development. Many of them, we were very pleased to see, utilized our Aludo remote modules that we had built for them in March. Our Aludo company is our online twenty-four seven professional development delivery with videos and activities that are short snippets that allow them to learn several different online programs. So many of them noted on their survey that that, that particular delivery is what saved them through quarter four. That is still available. I do grading on that with my department. Each of us takes one day a week to do grading. Our teachers are still utilizing the program through summer, which makes us very happy. We also have had some of the ESCs, Montgomery County, Hamilton County, offering some remote learning opportunities, which I forwarded on to the principals to send out to their staff. We are more than willing to send our teachers in the summer utilizing professional development funding to local trainings. So we are, you know, we do work through the summer and we're happy to work with our teachers if they have something they would like to attend. Several, several webinars have been offered to teachers that we pushed out to them. Some are participating, some are not. Obviously, with them being on summer break, that, that is not an expectation, but we do like to put those offerings out to their availability. And we also have worked with our Aludo company with a social emotional learning. That's another thing that, that we can't ignore during these difficult times. So I think some of our staff have very much enjoyed doing those modules as well. And all of that work does go, go toward their IPTF and their hours necessary for license renewal.
Other questions or discussion on items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.4?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson. I think it's back to you for item 6.1 and 6.2.
I think those are mine.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. I'm reading it incorrectly. Sorry.
That's all right. So 6.1 is the approval of software subscriptions in excess of the max allowable by board policy, and that was for Mind Play Renaissance, including Star Math and Freckle, as well as Discovery for Science and Health for elementary levels.
Is there a motion to approve items 6.1 and 6.2?
移到 Second.
Discussion or questions?
Just had one more question on Mind Play. There was a fourteen thousand dollar for a virtual coach. What is that?
That is for a hundred and ten subscriptions for our students who are served on an IEP. So that is special ed delivery. That is, that is a little bit different than what our typicals use on the program. So it's a little bit more tailored to their needs. So that is roughly, just, just under thirty percent of that contract.
Okay, so it's not a person, it's a type of the programming?
It is.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other discussion or questions?
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
All right, now we can move to Mr. Robinson. Sorry about that again. Ms. Cook, 7.1 and 7.2?
Yes, Mr. President and Board Members, this is a request for your approval for the A1 settlement of forty thousand dollars to be paid out July one. This is for the settlement. Seven two is a renewal for insurance. So we contract with Wade Insurance to go out and solicit for our insurance comes back as Liberty Mutual, once again, as we went with them this past year. We paid a premium of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars this past year. Our new renewal rate is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. It was initially fourteen percent higher, but Tara and I negotiated them down a little bit, so we got them down to just under twelve percent. So the premium would be one seventy-seven, four eighty-three.
Is there a motion to approve items 7.1 and 7.2?
移到 Second.
Discussion or questions?
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item eight point one. Are you going to cover this, Ms. Hester?
Oh, sorry. I, that was added late after my binder is already made. I don't have it in front of me. Sorry.
This is the approval of the amendment to the contract with the FCEA.
Yes, um, so I don't even have it in front of me. So this was our, this was a, had to be moved to virtual negotiations due to the COVID, so it's taken a little while longer, but this is the approval for the step and two point seven five percent raise for our classified, classified employees. And it's the same as what the teachers approved back in, goodness gracious, last year, it seems like.
Seems like a while ago.
Yes, sorry.
Is there a motion to, motion to approve item eight point one?
移到 Second.
Discussion or questions?
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajay?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
So now we'll move to eight point two. The, I think this is the board member comments. Mrs. Bab, do we usually start with you? All right.
First off, I'm grateful that we get a little bit of money back from the state, around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And thank you to Tara for your communication with that. And, you know, as I've been watching in the news, just with what different districts are having to do, it's really made me reflect back on our administrative team and as a lot of cuts are having to be made and the reason, not that there's nothing that's going to have to be done ever, but up to this point, our cost containment plan is what has saved us. And so I just want to say once again, thank you so much for the hard work of the last year, because it has, though we were hoping it was going to get us ahead, it's taken us to the solid place at a time that we had no clue that all this was going to happen. So, you know, every, it seems like every day we're seeing more and more in the news on what different districts are doing. So it's made me very, very thankful that we're not having a lot of staff cuts right now and things that it just feels like another hit to the district. So I'm very grateful for that. Fun, fun night last night. The baseball team played. I had no idea. I saw it on Facebook last minute. So I ran over to the baseball field and it just felt normal. It felt so good to be out on the baseball field and to see the excitement of the team. And the emotions of the parents were all over the place just to see their boys out there playing. So I am so appreciative of whoever pulled all of this together to, to make that happen, to get some games in for these, for these kids. So it was super neat, plus we won. So that was awesome too. Oh, great night. They celebrated the senior, so it was a neat, a neat night for them to play. I believe they played Valley View. The, the last thing is just to confirm, we will be back in person starting at our next board meeting in July. Am I correct with that? So I've never had many, as many technical difficulties as I have tonight. I went to three different machines throughout this board meeting, but I finally got one to work. So we will be back in person, which will be great. So that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
I just want to say thanks to Tara and Rob and Carrie and specifically Andrea tonight, because you, you did a yeoman's job at answering all the questions and presenting factual information in a way that was easy to understand. And it's, you just did a great job. So just want to say thanks and that's it. Oh, and, and welcome Larry Hook to the team.
Thank you, Charles. And Mr. Good?
Yep. Yeah, just thanks to the, the administrators, staff, everyone that's working extremely hard. You know, I, I know that it's incredibly difficult to work towards a goal where the goalposts move probably on a daily basis, if not a weekly basis. So, you know, the fact that you're, you're trying to plan for multiple scenarios instead of one makes it that much more difficult. But from my perspective, things are starting to coalesce and I think we're going to have good options by the time we, we start a school in the, in, I guess, late summer, fall. So, you know, again, I tip my hat to you guys. I know you're, you're working really hard. I think it's, it's going to be the best it can be, just like it was last year as well. So kudos. And yeah, welcome, Mr. Hook. We're, we're glad you're here. I'm sure Ms. Hester is got a beaming smile on her face right now. And then, you know, in all seriousness, thank you to everybody that's participated today. I think we certainly had a much larger audience and all I would ask is, you know, keep, keep coming to these meetings. I'm glad Ms. Bab brought up that we're, we're moving back to a physical meeting. I second the fact that I greatly prefer that versus Zoom. But, you know, the best way to let us know your thoughts is to be there and speak with us. You know, Facebook's great, but it, it's better to, to talk with us and let us, you know, ask questions, let us hear your answers. It's much more direct, it's much more efficient, and we appreciate it. So thanks for everybody's participation and I hope to see you at a future meeting. Back to you, Mr. Balajay.
Thank you. But the one downside of going last is you guys take everything and then just repeat. So, but no, that was very, very well said, and I was going to say the same thing. I, I did want to thank everybody for their participation tonight and for all the people that took the time to fill out the surveys and provide feedback. And as Mr. Good said, it, it's, it's great to hear from you. And I hope that when we are meeting in person, that, that you will join us, because I think, you know, it strengthens obviously our district to have that, that input and that communication and that dialogue. So, and again, thank you to all of our administrators. Again, it is, I know everybody, you know, we want answers. We all do. Several of us are, are parents as well and are in the same boat. And I, I know it is. And I know it is challenging that we don't have those answers yet. But again, appreciate all of the work that has been done to this point and will be done over the coming days and weeks as we start to get a little bit more guidance from, from the Health Department and from the state. And just appreciate all of your work in helping us figure out the, the best option for our kids, the best and safest option for our kids. So thank you for, for all of the work to this point. So with that said, are there any other announcements or future considerations?
I just wanted to take one more minute to publicly say thank you to the Warren County Emergency Operations Center. When COVID first happened and we all went on quarantine, they reached out to schools, they reached out to multiple types of businesses and the hospitals were reaching out to schools to ask for any donation of PPE that we had. And back then, and back in March, we didn't know that this would happen and we didn't have stockpiles, but we gave what we could. And they have returned the favor and said thank you by supplying us with six thousand surgical masks, seven hundred face shields, sixty boxes of gloves, and as many N95s as they could. The number isn't as big, but, because those are very coveted. But I just wanted to say thank you because that will help us. You know, Rob is, Rob and Bronwyn are every week meeting on Wednesdays to talk about our PPE so that we are prepared. So this will help us along as we try to accumulate as much as we can. So thank you, Warren County Emergency Operations Center.
That's great. Thank you for sharing. Any other announcements or future considerations? Okay, with that, we can move to item nine point one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Done with.
Second.
I was getting worried there.
I couldn't unmute myself.
Second myself.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Belaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you again, everybody, for the time this evening. Hope you have a great rest of the, rest of the week. Thank you.
Thanks for all the work.
Thank you.
Take care.